Good evening, everybody. We're gonna call the meeting to order if I have you to stand and join me in further. Okay, we will begin with roll call. James Drab. President. Susan Fallon. Anyone? President. Sarah Wanger. And Stephen Maples here. And Rodney Aigen, President. Okay, um, next for agenda, we're all right at the minutes from last month's meeting, any comments or amendments? Then can I have a motion to approve?
I mean, it seems for minutes.
I'll second. Thank you, all in favor? Aye. Okay, so for tonight, we will begin with ELPC 2023-0021 for the consent agenda for 124 Fourth Street. Is the applicant here, sweetie? Okay. Um, do any of the commissioners have any objections to handling this any consent? Um, any discussion on it, or? We've already reviewed the materials for it, we've already seen this application, as I understand it, went to uh the historic committee for their review, and they have approval at this point. And that was our only outstanding uh note on the proposal. Okay, so actions wise. For, I think we are just uh at site plan approval, correct? Okay, thank you. Um, so then can I get a motion to approve their site plan? Aye. Thank you, moving to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, that passes. Alright, so next item, uh moving into old business, alright. Um, old business, we will start with ELPC 2021-0030 for 309 and 311 Eighth Street. Thank you.
Okay, this is on. Good evening, my name is Sarah Drury, I'm with LaBella Associates, presenting Unity House on the President's Project on Eighth Street. Um, I've been in front of you guys before our last meeting, and we were before you guys previously. Um, the project has not changed from what you previously saw and what you saw last meeting. The uh, the existing building will remain as is with minor exterior renovations, just to clean it up. Um, it will include parking, it will include staircase going down, concrete staircase going down the backyard to a concrete patio. Um, other than that, the site has not changed, we're here for a site plan renewal that was previously approved, I believe in 2021. Um, and has since expired because there's no need change, we had to come back in front of you guys.
So absolutely no changes to the plans in front of us?
Nope, same parking, same building, stairs, concrete.
Okay, thank you. Um, any comments from commissioners?
We discussed this last meeting, and the gilders, and then it back.
Okay. Got you. Uh, do we need then to reopen public comment? This is numbers.
I don't think you need to reopen public comment. Um, and if the applicant states on the record that there has been no standing changes to the neighborhood surrounding neighborhood, then you can all rely on the speaker. But there would have to be demonstration on the record that there's nothing changed in the neighborhood that would justify a new book.
Which we just started, correct?
Right.
Okay.
We're actually more in line with the new code than the previous code.
Okay. Okay, um, in that case, we don't need another secret determination, just need a renewed site plan approval. Okay, uh, so I'll make a motion then that we approve the site plan.
Second.
Okay, then moving to a vote, all in favor?
I'm probably sorry. I would just see if anybody.
Is anyone here to uh offer public comment on uh the Unity House project? If you're on Zoom, raise your hands, uh raise the hand icon. Nothing. Okay. Alright, so mid vote, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you have the first and second on the motion? You're able to get that, the first and the second for the motion, right, okay, I got. Thank you. Alright, you're all set?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next item is ELPC 2023-0039 for 1011, the second to Evan and.
We discussed the last meeting. Uh, it's a smaller applicant, like it could be quicker.
I wanna get the one first with right here. And so I'll be going for it as well, I went over this with my own stuff. All right, I'll do it. Bear with us if you're on Zoom, we're just getting the applicant's presentation loaded up. Okay, it's working. Would you mind introducing yourself directly?
Sure, um, my name is Derek Gribulis, I'm architect with Topland Architecture. Um, gonna present some updated renderings, um, with the project, uh, you know, one ten second and a half. And um, made some updates and created some renderings for you folks to review. And this first view. Here is a view of a 87 unit building. Second. So this is um, the east uh side of the 87 unit building, the rectangular um building. And we made a couple tweaks to the colors, we had uh some more uh white siding on the building, we changed it to more of a light gray. Just to uh, just kind of kind of uh make the building a little bit more subtle and muted in nature. Um, we still have some accents around the building that are white, but uh, we eliminated the white siding um in this, in this round of the renderings here. But this is another view of the 87 unit. Uh, looking south along the, the second half of side of the building. And this is a, a view of the riverside of the 87 unit building. And uh, same color schemes kind of wrapped around the building, so where there used to be a, a white siding, we changed it out for a light gray siding, um, for the last meeting. And this is a, a further uh back view of the, of the second half side of the 87 unit building. And this is a view of the updated um 72 year building, um, this would be the side of the building that faces the second half. This building has a couple of angles to it, as you can see. One thing we did do between the last meeting and this meeting was, we changed out some of the, the gable um roofs uh that were being featured on some of the uh more prominent areas of the facade to like a reverse shed gable, reverse shed roof, you can see it. Um, in the center of the building and in the ends there. This is the view of the riverside of the 72 unit. And there's two 72 unit buildings, and we're mirror images of each other. And this side, um, featured balconies, just like the 87 unit balconies, we featured on the riverside of the buildings. And this is a closer view of the 72 unit building on the second half side of the, of the site. This is a closer up view of the riverside of the 72 unit building. This side has mountains. And this is a view, uh, we put all three buildings together on the site, we modeled the site, um, just to give you a, a sense of um the overall view of the project, raised both those. And then um, we also put in some um context buildings, just um as representations of these, these gray blocks or just um some nearby buildings, um, just for, you know, for the purpose of showing some context. And uh, the river there. Aquatic rivers across the, across from the site along Hudson. This is another view, um, looking, you know, from over the river, obviously. Uh, north, east. You see all three buildings, uh, one in the foreground is the 87 unit building with the two 72 unit buildings in the background there. This is another view from uh out over the river, um, looking towards the riverbank, with the buildings there. This is a view looking southwest.
Recording in progress.
In the background, see the, the context, um, across the river. And this is a view from basically the shoreline of the Hudson, uh, proposed bridge to get over, over. Uh, looking towards the two 72 unit buildings. You see there. And it's just a floor plan, uh, which hasn't changed since the beginning of the original submission. But, um, just here to present, whoops. Just bring it back up. And this is a building, this is a view of the south, uh, view of this 87 unit building. And this is that close up shot I think showed you originally there, um, but. So yeah, we just wanted to come and show you the updated renderings and the tweaks to the colors we made, tweaks to the roofs, um, and just uh get some feedback from you folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so as I understand it, public comment was opened um la- at last month's meeting and was not closed yet, um, so I think I'll, most commissioners start to turn it over to the public to, to continue with feedback. Anyone opposed them? Okay. Alright, so uh, we will move now to some public comment, if uh you would like to speak on this project, if you could um, put your name down on a list with Eric. And I will call names uh for everybody to come up and speak. And if you're on Zoom, uh, once we get through and with the members of the public here in person, uh, we'll, we'll go to you and, and have Eric all on names. So just uh raise your hand through the, your feature in Zoom. Oh, okay. Um, if you would mind, start with your name and address, Wanger.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Bachinger, um, I'm invited around the East that was born in Troy and enjoy the work in Troy and frequent travel. And I just wanted to thank you very much for keeping public comment within this meeting. Um, I'd like to speak briefly in support of the letters that have been submitted on behalf of friends of the Mayhican tribe, as well as my own letter, which was permitted independently in opposition to the site plans for this project. If you consider these proposed plans for the development at 1011 Second Avenue, please keep in mind that the city has unique opportunities and obligations regarding approvals for the aesthetics of this project. Being that this project will be clear cutting, undisturbed forest along the waterfront, and within a city that's revered for its unique historical architecture. I urge you not to settle for a mediocre plan, but to work with a developer to revise the plans for this project that allow for these buildings to better blend in with the neighborhood. And the surrounding environment is good, we have known since the incorporation of the city. Not only will this project drastically affect the character of the neighborhood, but in situated along the banks of the Hudson River that is enjoyed by the local community, surrounding community, and tourists. This project will also reflect the choices of the city as a whole. Does Troy really want to follow in footsteps of other local communities and counties that have improved cookie cutter developments such as this? Or does Troy want to set an example as a riverfront city that not only prioritizes growth and economic development, but one that also places emphasis on its natural resources, environment, community, history, and design that complements what it needs to be Trojan? For example, I urge you to look into when taking into consideration the riverfront developments further downstream near Terry Towneville. The design and layout of development taking place along the river there complements the aesthetics of the history of the locale, are built with more natural and quality materials that have taken community character along the riverfront into consideration. Enhancing the overall area as opposed to simply developing for the sake of the developer and development. Aesthetics are important, and they often inform the first impression we have of it. Aesthetics of the places we call home and places we enjoy visiting provide character, context, and comfort that helps define and shape our lived experiences and sense of place. As this parcel stands as the gateway to the city from the north, you have an opportunity here on a unique riverfront parcel to dictate how this development will look and complement this thing. And will set the stage for future riverfront developments. Beyond the community health, environmental, and indigenous historical considerations that are imperative to consider, please consider the legacy of the city and what this development will represent for those who choose to live here. And the impression of those who visit for, visit Troy for all that it has to offer, who may eventually choose to follow.
You have to one certain.
Please think outside the cookie cutter box and look to the future while celebrating the past. And demand better for the sake of your current and future generation Trojan. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration for this project, and for taking the concerns of your community seriously, would very much appreciate it. And if I may, I printed out a few examples of what I found in regards to Terry Towneville reference, just to see if there are alternatives. Thank you so much for your time.
I would like to say this. Thank you.
I am Sarah Bachinger. It's a B-A-C-H-I-N-G-E-R. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brown.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Please come up. I should have said at the beginning, um, we try to keep any public comment to three minutes, if you would, just in respect for the other applicants that are here and uh for efficiency of the meeting.
Certainly, I'll do my best. Uh, my name is Jessica Bennett, I live at 1009 Second Avenue, and I am immediately adjacent to the site being questioned, um. And I want to thank all of you for listening and taking public comment, and um, I recognize that some of the things that you're hearing really isn't uh in your public meeting tonight, but. It wasn't dealt with during the secret process, and so you're dealing with it, so I appreciate you listening, um. The city council issued a negative declaration affecting the ending of the environmental review, and part of the resolution that was passed was that future mitigation uh in coordination with SHPO, the State Storage Preservation Office, which oversees the archaeology on this process, has included a national register eligible site, um. Everything would be coordinated with them. Uh, we have yet to see uh any sort of phase three data plan measurement um in place, and that is something that I would ask you as the body right now that is overseeing them, and again, I recognize this might not be what you're supposed to be doing in this part of the process, but it hasn't been done yet. As concerned citizens, I want to make sure that the important archaeology and 7,000 year old history, uh indigenous history on this site is honored and uh preserved, really, because we're gonna see it um destroyed. We have had during the process of speaker, which is several years long, and we may or may not be aware. Gattico First Nation, which two acres of this city in Gattico, uh come and advocate for the preservation of the archaeology and the history of the site. The Stockbridge Monty also wrote a letter from their tribal officer addressing what's on the site. We've had uh the Akasas, the Mohawk come down to several meetings and speak about this. We've had travel leaders from all over New York State advocating and asking to make sure that their history is honored and uh preserved in ways that are in line with New York State. We haven't seen that, any evidence of that plan in place yet, um, uh, we've been in touch with SHPO, there is no plan yet on their schedule for their field attack, uh, excuse me, field effect determination, which as I understand is, is what should be coming next, um. We all have concerns for this land, and this land, uh, if I'm being super real, really uh is one of the last people's land that straddles both pre-colonial, pre-Columbian uh contact as well as colonial history. This was part of Abraham Jacob Lansing's original stone Arabian pattern, and that's part of the reason that it has never once been developed. There are no ruins, there are no foundations on this site, and as one of the commissioners brought up last week, or it could be last month.
Just under a minute.
Um, that, that is, that should give us pause for additional uh care and concern on this site, um. We've had three, close to four years of uh extreme citizen outreach with concern for this, and I know this isn't really what you guys do at this point with the site plan review process, but no one has done it yet. And I urge you not to move this forward, not to kind of pass the buck to future measures, because who's watching? Um, and I hate to task you with that, but that's my request, that you guys take the reins on them and make sure that the stewardship of this important, thousands of year old history to Troy is protected in line with New York State, but also in ways that future Trojan people from all over this area can enjoy and want to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Not seeing anybody in the room, anybody on Zoom, if you have already raised the digital hand. Nobody? Okay. Um, would the applicant like to respond to any, any comment or offer any further discussion?
Being the help, or if I go to Karen. Sure. I don't know, keep it there. Uh, so there was uh a comment about mitigation in SHPO archaeology, um, the. I will call it a mischaracterization of the secret process. Nothing about mitigation. Sequence of how things will be handled. SHPO. Sorry, it's either. Complete avoidance or phase three damage. It was not a mitigation measure, it, it's a measure that. In case a- anyone is not aware, the step to submitting ELY or speeding for construction cannot do that. Consultation, SHPO, the consultation with SHPO is ongoing. Uh, there's also comments about new information being provided, provided to the uh commission. I'm, I'm not aware of any, any information um that's been provided since SHPO was completed. Uh, everything that's been noted and discussed was all information that was presented. Thoroughly reviewed by the city council. Archaeology. Species. And trees. Not gonna go through every list, but there has been no information. For the, the open secrets, the meetings. There's also comments about conducting uh consultation with the, the tribe itself, which has conducted and has been ongoing. I'd say three years, I think that's about right. There's also. Mention of the skirt, the first schedule of nations, um. I don't know if the commission itself is aware of the letter from Stockbridge Monty, however, they have submitted letters to the planning commissioner, to the city council during the review process. In, in one of those letters. The Stockbridge Monty know that their efforts are wholly distinct, not only from the friends of the Mayhican tribe, but also of Gattico first nations. And that some Stockbridge Monty is the only federally recognized tribe involved in consultation, is the only entity that can officially speak with the Mayhican people appropriately, appropriately representing. Corting, and they use the word our, ancestral, cultural heritage. So I would just like to place some context in the proper tribe. It is, that has been, continues to.
Thank you. Okay, so back to the commissioners, um, again, we need to curtail our review to the site plan consideration, layout of building, appearance of building, site features, site amenities, um, bus stops. Fire hydrants, you know, the typical origin thing, we're, we're doing smoke storage, trash programs, anything. Uh, but we're, we're not here to be reviewing the environmental considerations that were already decided upon uh by the city council, and I'm saying that as much for the commissioners here as for the public, um, to, to understand that and reinforce it. Um, so at this point, the new. So at this point, the new materials brought are just renderings, um, and advancements to the, or, or changes rather to the um, appearance of the buildings. And I think maybe we start there. I'll turn it over to you guys, and if you have something else you'd really like to get at first, too.
Um, I just wanted to say that, you know, I appreciate your, your comment and you trying to keep us on task and totally accurate, you know, secret. Um, but not within our purview, and we're not, you know, a lot of the archaeological, archaeological um, comments that are made seem like they're also outside of our purview. Um, but, but our purview does extend a little bit further than just where a fire hydrant or a stop or could be architectural, um, characteristics are. And, you know, we are tasked with identifying the impacts of the development on existing community, existing site, um, the health, well-being, the body of life with the surrounding community. So I just want to, uh, push back a little bit on, on the, I know we are original, um, and it's a little bit of a unique situation for us, but it is a little bit more, um, you know, we still do have things within our purview that are a little bit more wider than how you frame it.
But, yeah, but to be clear, impacts are specifically within the purview of secret. Identifying adverse environmental impacts is the function of secret. Assessing a building's potential to not fit community character, or uh, it would be identifying one of those adverse impacts. That said, we do have the ability to guide the development of the project or offer feedback that would still serve that aim of, of not having an adverse impact.
That said, it may present to us now the site plan review process raise a concern to us about adverse environment impact that had not been presented to the council, which actually have an obligation to that, that for a second. But had, I've always
Right, within site plan review, you, you know, an environmental impact is makes it seem like an adverse impact here, but as it impacts all your life, like hell, within site land review, simply within the preview of site land review. This is my, why I care about things like fire factors.
Do you want to offer anything else about?
I mean, I think, I think there's a lot of discussion that's yet to be had. Um, you know, we, we have every meeting, I think, um, heard the presentation or, or often times spring updates. And we, we've now had public comments for a few meetings, but we really haven't had much discussion, you know, at, at the last one where Roddy wasn't here. Um, and Sarah, you weren't either.
I was not.
Um, we hardly had any discussion at all. So, um, you know, we, we saw the, the updated architecture and we you know, talked about things that we, the things that we didn't like, put it bluntly, I think, um, when it comes to architecture, not my, not my, uh, forte, but you know, the way that we initially addressed this, um, project, we said specifically, we don't want to see what's been done directly across the river. We don't want to see cookie cutter development. Um, and you know, I think those comments weren't really what, what's been presented is kind of very similar to what was seen across the river is, um, something that could be seen anywhere across the country. And so those are some of the architectural, um, challenges, I think, I'm struggling with now. It's, it doesn't seem like, uh, some of the comments we've made are happening, being seriously. Yeah, I, I like the way.
Sure. Yes, just keep a really new light on issue.
One, one of the things that we're charged with, uh, responsibility, which I was to ensure the compatibility of the site plan with the surrounding neighborhood. And I think if you look at one of these slides, shows the full extent of the development along the river. It crystallized for me. I mean, you've heard a lot of folks, the public and comments from folks on board that expressed some level of concern over the magnitude of this development in this one plot of land. Your slide brought it home. You looked into going, looking north on the river and saw the whole development. It looks like a city. Looks like you see. So I think that one of the concerns that I have in terms of how, uh, this is fitting in functionally with the neighborhood is reconciling what you're proposing with what's there. Someone suggested in the various letters that were in on this, that we ought to see not just little boxes of what's around us, but maybe a better representation. How does it contend with single family homes and other buildings are, are right there. And I think it, it, it does it. It's, it's jumps off the page. It's something totally different. And how does that fit into show that it's compatible? I think that when you look at the whole shoreline of Troy, there's nothing like that as a fitting to see. So those are, those are the, I'd like to address that and, and the concern, how, how do we deal with the massive footprint that this is bringing to this small, relatively small spit of land? It's left intact now. And how, how does that work in the name? But those are the areas that I have.
Speaking back on what you just said, um, the renderings that show
I think your mic is off.
There you go. Okay. The renderings that show, uh, what looks like the plains and the brashness behind the, uh, building.
Boy, come to some good shit.
It's not really that of what's there. You've got blank space, uh, there's some little rise of, of hills in the background, and this looks like it's sitting all by itself.
Sunday driver.
You know, and that's all there is. And it's currently not true, and I very much agree.
And then there was one more.
Seen anything that's really in context or in any way.
One was, uh,
Just to be flat, um,
monocytes.
Yeah, but buildings sit by themselves.
Agreed, but our, our
I got all four of those for fifty five dollars. I sent them.
What elements should be here? What elements would be invited to?
Right? Like you can't get one of those here for that.
Do the chief of you, we're talking twenty seconds.
Kristen, no.
You tell the name? What his wages are.
The types of things that you guys want to see. Because without that.
But they make, you know, actually.
Yeah.
Understood and agreed. This commission needs to offer you actionable changes or specifics of the types of things we're not liking. Uh, we, we basically need to give better feedback, more constructive, specific feedback should be our goal. And I think just for context, a lot of the applications we see, they do come with that same intention of seeking architectural feedback, but they're bringing a rendering to us with the surrounding buildings that exist in place today already there. You're not going to be updating those every time you update the design because they're not updating. You're just changing your building. Um, so I think maybe what you're asking for is almost a view study of, of sorts.
We had to do that at the last meeting, actually.
Interesting.
Yeah, okay. And, and you know, this is, um, personally, and, and I want to say too, that I, I think there is a
Let's take shit hurts.
The site is I don't know if I made
It's not like regular hash, like it does not smoke like that.
Can you guys please mute your, your phone?
Be good for the community, good for the city. We're not looking at this project, you know, the, the, the basics of this project and saying, wow, there's no way this could potentially be good. And personally, I feel like again, our comments are not being taken seriously. We've said from the start, we, what we don't want, which is what's being presented to us. And now we're being told we need to get architectural details right before we show you how these buildings fit into the context of the, of the site and of the community. That doesn't make any, I mean, that feels bad. So it feels like as a commission, we're kind of being corralled into getting ahead into some of the details that frankly, we're not ready to get into. And furthermore, we have given specific direction on architecture multiple times. I think one of the first comments, I think Sarah made a comment the first time this project was presented to it. Hey, if you're going to do something here, and I'm paraphrasing, make it stand out. Make it either go with the site and be unique, or make it something really good that we would like to see anywhere.
I totally hear you, and I understand where you're coming from, but I understand from their perspective that make it stand out. He could tell you that stands out.
Sure, yeah, I guess objectively, nobody could, could say, I think this stands out. But I think as a commission, we can speak, and I think, again, I think that's why we, we should have more discussion amongst our commission, because it has been okay, I don't like that cornice, or I don't like that reveal, or whatever it is. And I think we could go around and say, hey, do we think this stands out? And we think this is in line with what feedback we gave initially. And then again, three times at three other meetings. Do we think this fits the character of the neighborhood? Do we think that any of the other comments we said about using the footprint of the disturbed area or the parking area or uh, improving the landscaping plan, or any of the other twenty comments that I sent to Eric, we didn't share it with his representatives. We're taking serious because none of them have. And this is not something that we this is something we have dealt with in the past, but to this extent feel like, yeah, it just doesn't feel like any of our comments are being taken seriously. And, and frankly, I feel like our time is being wasted. I wish, I wish we disagree with the government, um, every specific architectural element that we're supposed to change. We have not received any hearing comments. We have not submitted enough insight into the hearing. However, after the initial comment about manmade particles basically went ahead and did that. And then we actually did it further. We haven't submitted up the insight into the project. So again, you specifically come as even more than staff to talk about the architecture. So I think you would agree if you went back and said, hey, move those corners, hey, change the games, everything that we just explicitly outlined.
It comes down to a disagreement over what is a specific direction, but I do think there's work left to be done. I do see a progression here. I see the things that are changing. I do see them as improvements. I do think that the appearance of the buildings is a long way from, from what I'd like to see, um, at that site. Um, I think for me, if I'm trying to give you some things to work on, wood grain and tones are missing from this, that call to that natural environment that's there. Um, and maybe not best suited to tell you how to work that into the design, but that is kind of one thing I'm, I'm seeing as standing out. You have sort of a harsh box of very clearly twenty-two or two thousands, uh, style of design against what is currently a natural environment. And I think that that's jarring. Layout of the buildings, I, I'm not strongly opposed to, uh, like the actual footprint or shape, the volume of the space. Um, but I think that the roof lines need work. I think more could be done there. I still think we should look into, and I, I'd like next meeting, um, to see this specific code path that restricts or prohibits you from doing something on the roof. I know that was brought up previously, but I'd like to understand what that actual code path is. Uh, because I imagine that there's, um, carve outs for things like setback from roof edges or knee walls, be mitigating measures, things like that.
Are, are you talking about total?
I think the, when I asked about rooftop activation before, it was, uh, the response was it's over a certain number of stories, so you can't be on the roof.
Yeah, so, um, it was an ADA issue to have access to the roof. We wouldn't need an elevator shaft like that plus our, um, true. Yeah, and I, I'll provide the citations, the code, and the exceptions. I'll write, um, my relation with the elevator shaft.
And will, will there be elevators in the building? Yeah, so there's, it's just a matter of potentially extending that elevator shaft another to the roof, right?
Yeah, we would bring up the elevator shaft and stair tower, um, just to have the high limitation.
Gotcha.
Put it under there. So we put us over there.
You would need a zoning. Sorry, Rick. Yes. Go ahead. So pull the switch towards you. There you go. So now, now you're obviously, I'm not a member of the commission. I'm not even the, the regular person sitting in the lawyer's chair, but because Andy has a conflict. Um, but having listened to the comments for the last three sessions, it, it seems to me you're spinning your wheels a little bit, pardon me, because of many of you are probably not familiar with the site, uh, and that I am pretty familiar with the site. Walk my dog there sometimes and take a swim. Uh, I think you would all benefit from a good view, especially in the topography. I do not know, uh, what the developer plans to do in terms of the, the how ultimately the, the land will be configured, uh, but that would be questions for you guys to ask for sure. Uh, there is a lot of potential. We're screening there. Uh, the highest points of the land are basically, uh, except for the, uh, except for the one, uh, viewpoint, uh, are all closer to the road. Uh, I mean, I really think you, you might be able to have a more informed discussion if you solve exactly where the, where the buildings will be and how they could be configured. And then the developer could, could you know, um, integrate your concerns about design with the actual landscape and what people are going to see and things like that. And I hope I haven't stepped out of it.
No, I, I think we did actually, I remember correctly, I think we did request to do a site visit a couple of times, maybe.
Oh, yeah.
It's all documented.
Okay, um, so I guess I'm just sitting there.
We're, we're shy. I, I think the group were, um,
But when you're there, no conductive.
Wait, wait. Um, so maybe while that's brought up, can we, can we schedule that? It sounds like we're gonna have somebody from the, we tried. Okay, great.
The, the issues are largely your availability. Uh, so far, then, most, yeah.
Now, hopefully after some
you know, so if you guys would like to visit this site, then I would urge you to make some time during the day. And I know that might cut into your work hours like that, but unfortunately, it's just not as easily managed to, to set this up with ten different people. You know, so if you can accommodate some time during the daylight hours, that'd probably be a lot easier. People put in your schedules. Let me know. I have a spreadsheet for you guys to come check out and see, see what availability you all have. We'll, we'll, if you got it going, maybe next week we can get something. So.
Speaking of in stone, uh, the foundation trim, I would like to see a difference. Some personally that are used, um, on that pedestal base for the building.
You having a discussion and Roddy, her chair, not giving direction on architecture.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm offering my personal opinion of the design. I'm trying to give you specific things that stand out to me in the renderings that I would like to see changed. Um, honestly, I think a wholesale change is really a better approach to, to your overall design, something that does better echo the more heavy brick masonry construction of the city. Um, I think part of why it would be so beneficial to see actual buildings in place of the white. Squares or cubes on uh the rendering that does show the surrounding buildings. Uh, would be to see what what that comparison is, but I think that's what I'm trying to say all along. Um. I'm trying to give you specifics in the actual features of the building that's in front of me that I like or don't like. Um. Roof lines, I think, have improved. Um. I'm not sure whether or not it makes sense to do that shed roof in all of the locations where you're having an awing. As opposed to the the heat cable. Um. Yeah, I'll I'll digress and let some other commissioners chime in and or have a discussion, Sarah said amongst us.
I'll jump in and just say that um well, first of all, I mean, I'm primarily not also a. Architect and that's aesthetics are not necessarily my forte. Um, I am much more concerned about a lot of the issues that were raised and just, you know, sort of reiterating the 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 point by point response. I'll just. Just reiterating that I'm looking forward to to that when it comes.
Yeah, again, we're waiting to try to give them.
No, no worries. I'm just just noting that once again, I'm just like, I'm looking forward to that, uh especially because it was relates to the flooding and and the those concerns I think are one. I think that I'm most acutely uh concerned with and the footprint. Um, to get to some of the the aesthetics, the renders that were presented here tonight, I think. I think for me at least, were helpful in terms of, I I think the move to do this lighter color and even possibly the blue. But definitely lighter colors, I think, is a mistake. I think I I think it's the. Seeing seeing all of that vegetation and trees like really sort of impact impacted me to. Really desiring to see more natural colors, like greens, browns, things of that nature. Um, or alternatively, something even more bold. You know, it it just I feel like we're kind of landing in this like not really one or the other kind of situation. So I would I would encourage. You know. And I I think the the member of the public that brought the some of those um. Examples, I I think kind of hit along the lines of sort of where I was thinking, like seeing seeing a lot of the bricks, seeing a lot of the the you know, reds, browns, greens. Um, or even something that's like, I don't know, calling back to some kind of. I I I think like I honestly would rather like almost would rather go like full on like kitschy like. Uh, you know, bottom cabin over this, you know what I mean? Um, just something that evokes something about the nature um in some way. Um, or like I said, alternatively, something just completely bold and like, I don't know, glass or something. It would be, you know, sort of one way or the other.
So I think I'm trying to understand what our sentiment is about the buildings. I think. I don't want to speak for others. It it looks to me like a nineties or early two thousands style. Um, and we're looking for something maybe with more classic elements, okay? And this is an invitation for all of you to say yes, no, and that's not what I'm thinking, more stone, whatever it is. Um.
Yeah, I'll I'll jump in. I would second a lot of the customers from other commissioners like Roddy about. Well, I think the architectural tweaks thus far have been positive steps. I would like to see more whole field changes to the design. Um. I think about the public comment, hearing, something I think that it looks a little bit like a Hampton Inn, you know, anywhere to West Bay and. And that really does ring true to me. Uh, and I think part of that might be the color scheme, like Steven was saying. And Jako Roddy's comments, maybe having some more natural elements, you know, maybe on line of wood grain or, you know, brick. I know that uh a public, a member of the public submitted some renderings, not really just pictures of a river developing. Part of the down the Hudson in Terrytown, which doesn't include uh, you know, a great facade. It's reasonable, I'm sure it's all. Some sort of, you know. A thought on the next tier, but it does make for a more classical look like Roddy was suggesting, so we're not going to think that has to be what you submit, but. Something that does that. And then there were some other pictures that they showed, something that was much more modern, but distinctive. So, you know, it didn't just kind of look like. You know, I know we use the phrase, couldn't cut her a lot, that can be unhealthy, but if you do something bold that works. You know, you can knock it out of the park where you can kind of go safe but worrying, you know, with something that. Really not going to please a lot of commissioners, I think, the public as well.
The one that stood out, I think what stood out about it was how it pulled nature, it appeared from the same one into the building. Within the balconies that had uh plantings, it had verticality, which kind of echoed trees.
Yeah.
It was that sort of design language that made it stand out in a nice way.
Absolutely. There's not, I think, one key to what works. So it might take a little bit of experimentation and playfulness, but you know, you can certainly find something either going to the modern or the the classic and. But it, you know, try for something that is not just. At the field or over lawn, which I think we railed about many, many other visions become for us.
Can I offer an analogy that I think? Captures the thought here. Um, and I have a I have a lot of things to say, um I paused mid midway if I need to to stop me. But um. Think about what RPI did on Fifteenth Street. I don't remember how many years ago with the biotech building. Long Fifteenth Street. Practically replicated the the architecture from the original canvas. Mimicked the quad, but interpreted some of the detailing. To make it more buildable in, let's let's say it was two thousand. I just can't remember when it was built. And that replication, which or mimicry, which would normally irritate me, just felt so right. On the flip side, on Eighth Street. They gave us M P E C, which doesn't look like anything on this planet. And it fit perfectly because it uses typography. It excites everyone. So I mean, everybody likes it. But it's exciting and innovative and. And it sends a message of of the special things that RPI does there. So I think that speaks to the classic or something. I can't remember how you paraphrased me, James, but I get that, right? Like M P E C. Um, so I want to go back a little bit and um talk about the overall site. Plan because and and there's a progression of thought here. Um, and before I forget, I want to, I want to thank Sarah for her fabulous three minutes and ten seconds. Uh, that was really, really helpful and she captured a lot, I thought. Uh. Very eloquent. Um, this is a really big project and I would suggest that. We we deserve and the public deserves. Really high quality presentation materials to understand the whole idea. The thought that we can examine the architecture as the the building apart from the whole context is just, I think that's unfair. There is, I think, only one rendering that shows a substantial portion of the river, and the river is so important to this project. And in fact, it. The rendering shows that we are obliterating the view to the river uh from the other side of the building, the linear building. Um, there was a reference to this. You know, a a comparison to a Hampton Inn. Well, the Hampton, I've never seen a Hampton Inn this big. See the the building. I could I could swallow the methane of the two uh. Semi circular, I I don't know, the arc, the arc shaped buildings, but the linear building, it is, the scale is. It is uh, it's unacceptable. In many ways, and I'm perfectly willing to share more details. Um. So I think my my soapbox statement would be that. Acres of virgin woods in the city of Troy. Cannot be wiped out. For what we're seeing. For for. For me. For the city to sacrifice the trees and the animals, endangered or not. Uh, we have to do something really special, and I know it's not me because we don't own the property, but. To support a project, it needs to be really special and its benefits need to extend beyond. The immediate users and owner of the property. That's my position. I'm pausing. And I can talk about the architecture, which is what we're being asked to get.
I thought that was very well said. Um, you know, a comment had been made, I'm not sure from who. There's there's so much concern and sensitivity to the historical significance of the site. And I'm not sure if you could point to something in the design that you would say this pays homage to what was here before this. This is an architectural element and the the design language, the message behind it, the metaphor of it is. This as it connects to what was here before, something like that. Those kind of things help add specialment. With design, um whether it, I mean, this, as I understand it from reading the archaeological reports was a foray. Um, so doing more with stone would make a lot of sense to me in that site to to try and call into that element. Um, yeah, I don't want to. Control all the time here, so let all the other commissioners jump in.
I I will say one more thing, getting more macro. I want to see that there is an experience on this site. Uh, and not just parking lots and and buildings and and perhaps that's not the vision that the applicant has, but. What I'm seeing is so ordinary and inhuman that I can't support it. Uh, okay, so our the architecture, I think a wholesale change. I think the math thing is too big. Uh, I have no problem with the four stories at all, but I think the overall footprints are too big. They are unwelcoming. And the material palette has, it is. Completely agnostic of site. To the site. Uh, I think some of Roddy's ideas about materiality are great, uh but I I think. Uh, of an architectural vision is needed here and it might mean more smaller buildings. And I want to see how it works for the site and I and I personally need to see mature trees staying on site. Not just at the road, uh but for outside. It's the only way I could support a project.
Another benefit of what you just suggested, breaking those buildings up, might be restoring some view to the river if you. Separate them or if you somehow left portal portals through the space, through the volume into the river.
I'm out of of healthy clear cutting, clear cutting to the advantage, not just. Of the the contractor, the builder. But maybe viewpoints can be created from the road and. Enjoyed by others. It's just a thought, right? That's what I mean by experience and creating a community. Both a community within this site, but a way for this new community, because it's a lot of units and a lot of people. To actually connect to. People beyond the site.
Yeah, I think I think that community connection piece is key and and in breaking the buildings up into smaller buildings. There's an opportunity for that. You know, Bill uh mentioned something about it looking like a small city and. You know, if if we're really looking at a small city, you see the buildings interacting with one another, you see opportunities for people to be interacting with one another. Um, you know, you already have the the trail and kayak launch and these other elements that um will help. Connect people to the river and provide some sort of amenity, but there's not really a way for the links. And people living there to uh interact in more naturally. Uh, so I think there are a lot of opportunities to reach in bigger buildings so that they allow for. People to connect and. Direct.
I mean, I think I will pick up just sort of connect the two points that you both have just recently made. Um, in relation to the gazebo, the path of kayak launch. And having that be something that is more. It right now, it just feels like it's an add-on at this point and and it doesn't, it doesn't have that sort of place in women and community. Um, that I think like you sort of what you were saying to. Sorry, uh, that you, it doesn't have, it doesn't have that like a sense of. You know, this is something special and interesting. Um, this is a unique. Place. Um, it it is, and I think especially as we turn to the future and and getting into those more specifics that you're looking for. Um, it. Right right now, it does feel sort of kind of vaulted on and especially I I my. Attention over the past month or so has been drawn to the kayak launch and like, you know, this, when I'm looking at the. Um. The ordinance and and you know, the the point of this is that it's supposed to be a a public feature and and right now it's just where it feels. Kind of sad. There's there's not a lot to it. There's not a lot of details around it, the details that we've gotten so far about like gravel and. I don't know, maybe something there was possibly a talk about like a a station or something, but it like, you know. Kind of a little bit more, um. A little more thought into like making that space. A a true public space that's meant to be active and activated. Not not just simply, you know, you park and then there's some rocks, like, you know, some something a little bit more substantial, whether that's. Some kind of uh washing facilities, some sort of storage facility, some kind of. Um, docking if if need be, I mean, someone pointed out that this is, this is the Hudson, so at some certain points in the day. I mean, the river is going to be quite a ways from that, from those rocks, like it's. It says title, so it'll be, there may be some challenges in that. Um, so just to kind of connect those two points.
That's good feedback. When and I like that as you started to say, you know, what's special, you started to try and challenge yourself in what is it that is missing?
Hmm.
From being that. So when we give that kind of feedback, it it needs to stand out or be special. What is it that you're in your head thinking, an example of or a specific thing that you feel is too simplistic by? I think you started to try to get there.
I'm going to jump back because I have an example since being here, but it. The project is so big that it actually reminds me of like a a vacation resort. But vacation resorts have all these little amenities sprinkled around. There's the little. There's the koi pond and the fireplace and the the barbecue gazebo and the pool. And like all those things that make people want to be there all the time. And this project doesn't have anything but the building and parking and the kayak launch. And it's it's just so big. It needs to me, it needs more.
I just want to reiterate a point Sarah made earlier too about the presentation and that, you know, I'd like to see more cohesive. Uh, encompassing presentation of projects. A third of the size, we are are generally looking at a lot, a lot more information, a lot more. Uh, something that's just all encompassing. And and again, it just feels like, you know, we're we're trying to go back and forth about architectural details and like this. This improvement, uh we change the color, will that make it better? And it's just not, it's not going to get either of us where we need to be.
Yeah, and again, you haven't gotten our our full site plan. You read your first sketch line of comments. Now that we, you know, the commission released the engineer review, they just want to get that. Now that we, you know, the commission released the engineering review, they just want to get that, that stuff.
Great, yeah, it's early, thanks.
I think part of the problem here is that. You've done a lot of tweaking, some of it great, some of it new, but it's still the same linear building, gigantic or building. It's like the mill three at Harley Mill quarter mile long. Uh, and then you have the two C shapes building. And I don't, and keep tweaking it, but they remain the same boxes and I think. You know, unfortunately, and I, believe me, I know this costs money and, and you probably hate all of us, but it needs to be working. It really does. I, I think there is a project here, but this is myth. And, um, I would hope that you would really reconsider putting a little more into it. Uh, the third picture you've got that shows the curved building with the engines. I'm sorry, it looks like you're going into a mall and, um, all the little tower boxes with the shed roofs. Look like prison towers. I mean, I'm sorry, you gotta do better for this incredibly important site on the Hudson River in Troy.
And I just, I would like to acknowledge, like, you know, given what's in the, the, the legislation, the ordinance. And the conditions that y'all are under, I, I appreciate that what we're asking is like. A difficult ask, but I, I think kind of where we're all going is. Yeah, like this, this is, this is the kind of project that demands that kind of like, you know, let's put the nose to the grindstone, let's do this, you know?
Yeah, and, and again, we will go back and look and do what we can, but there are some things that we might not be able to. Just simply, uh, like views of the river, if I recall correctly, I think because of the population. I don't think that you actually see down. But again, we will look at it.
Well, even, even our request for maybe breaking up some of the buildings, I mean, the legislation says three, no more than three buildings. So again. Um, we're, we're asking for creativity, I guess is my point. Like, that's, that's what we're asking for is like, you know. The, these seem, these, these restrictions can be restrictions or they can be opportunities for creativity and we're asking for creativity.
I also just wanna point out that the, the legislation says up to no, no, no more than twenty thirty. The space, that it has to be, you know, any, any. They have to be this big or this large. Um, and maybe this question for Rick, but you know, there's been discussion about. Needing zoning, oh, that would require a zoning variance, but you know, it is. When, when we have suggested the big site plan changes, like Roddy talked about the roof. And you know, there's been discussion, oh, that would, that would require us to go to Baccin's zoning board and get variants. That's still. Something that they can do just like any other project, correct? You know, high variance, any, any area there.
Yes, they guys don't do that. Um, I think you already did give a high clearance. Any other commissioner comments? Phil, it sounds like everybody. So, next month, you'd like to be on for the meeting? Or would you like a little more time?
I think that makes sense. We don't think we can add a dangerous everything.
Do we have a time on the third party review?
I have reason to be third party review, um. That the, the accuracy of their statements in terms of the return has been a little bit skewed. But right at end of page, um, I just gave it very, very, very soon. Within, within a few days.
Okay, thank you then, um, if there's nothing else.
Uh, but my point in asking that or my reason for asking that is just. And I am, we, we talked about having the, the more thorough presentation and I just don't know how to start this to have another. To review it again without that presentation. So if, if we don't have, if it sounds like we will have the review back and then the whole presentation tab, that would be great. But if not, then maybe we don't spend the time on it next month.
Yeah, I mean, if, if the changes come back, we'll, we'll work with Eric. Ultimately, if, if the. Project does not advance or isn't taking feedback into their changes, we would move to a vote.
Sure.
At some point after public hearings. All right, um, so can I get a motion then to the table? I move to table this item to the, uh, November. Okay, moving to a vote on favor. All right, thank you very much. Okay, coming back to the agenda, um, we are on. PLPC twenty twenty one zero zero seven six for fourteen sixty seven to seven. Thank you, Ricky. It's work.
Howdy.
Hi there, if you wouldn't mind to hear, uh, name and address.
My name is Adam Lobbs and I live at five zero eight South Avenue here in Troy. Here, setting yes for that fourteen sixty seven.
Would you like to give us a brief overview of, uh, this is a special use permit? So, um, just briefly, uh, for the commissioners, as I understand it, new zoning moves special use permits. Into the purview of the planning commission, um, and that's the applicant's. Um, request tonight is for a special use permit to be able to add different operations to the business.
We also reviewed this on last, last meeting and, uh, I think it's complete and, um.
Stop you sooner next time.
Uh, I did last meeting, I was scratching, I'm like. And then I realized, so that would have been helpful. Or did anybody have, are there any changes or did anybody have any concerns?
The only thing that we did, it was brought up about bike parking last time. It was in our plan to do it. Always, but we hadn't put it onto the actual site plan, so we included that on the site plan and sort of physically on there, the area that we're.
Okay, um, so then last meeting, we would have declared the application complete, um, and did we have any public comments? Okay, um, as, if you guys are good, I'll open the board.
I, I just was gonna point out, um, Adam did reach out to me asking about different bike parking ideas. And what would be acceptable for the planning commission, so. And he's, uh, now.
I would suggest that you put the conversation on the record.
Sure.
Um, at what you had suggested and make all the planning boarders aware of. Uh, whatever it was that you're saying, yeah.
So, so just to summarize it, um, and I, I can do that, but, um. I directed the applicant to a research call, uh, by a company called Dero, D E R O. They have a little guide on what bike parking is good, what bike parking is bad. Um, how many bikes fit, that sort of thing, where to go. And then I also sent him a photo of a really bad bike rack example and a really good bike rack example.
And I haven't, I haven't gotten around a bicycle for a long time, but I remember from when I was that there were bike racks that were not helping. And so I was like, you, you're riding around a bike all the time. What is a safe, helpful bike rack and what's kind of a trash bike rack? Invested in all of this.
And if I could just ask you to state for the record that, as I understand it, your intention in contacting Mr. Rad was. Going to a bike guru, not in any way you're influencing both of them.
No, yeah, I, we've been planning on having a bike back there since before the last meeting. We just haven't done it yet. And that's why I wasn't on the site plan. And to be honest, we don't have the funds to go out and buy one right now, uh. Regardless, but we wanted to put it on the plan so that it would be there for everyone. And we were hoping that if it was possible to find a design that we seemed to build ourselves, that we would do that. So, but because he's always on his bike and I figured he would know what was the wrong kind of. Bicycle rack to invest our time or resources.
I mean, smart move, I would agree. I just wanted to confirm that it wasn't to attempt to lobby your employee.
I, I think I also in, in the last meeting, we were all, there wasn't really a lot of commentary on the, um. What's being proposed and so it wasn't, you know, if I sway or concern that I, I presented and. I'm also, I, because it's not a contentious case, especially, I, I don't need to vote, I can just. I'll go do laps in the parking lot.
I think we've leveraged, leveraged this.
I think you can all take notice that you know bike, bike rack, so.
On hand, I just, I kind of, yeah, and I know, uh, who, that I was involved, got some used bike racks from Toyota Bike Rescue.
I hadn't thought of reaching out to them.
Okay, um, so I will open the board for public comment. Is there anyone here that came to speak about this project? Okay, I see nobody. Anybody on Zoom? Raise your hand there. Nobody, okay, um. Oh, we really make motion to close all the comments on this one.
Yeah, make a comment. I love what you've done with the building.
Thank you.
And please don't forget about planting the trees and hopefully it will have neon yellow or orange foliage in the fall.
To go with the rest of our colors. We, we have actually two and three spots. Uh, we're just waiting to talk to somebody from the city for recognition. I don't want that base split in, but. Um, yeah, gotta have the construction.
That's all.
Very good.
Did we need any secret determination? No, okay. Um, so then all that's left is approval for the use, this is a special use permit, so it's not a fight. So I need a motion. I would re-approve the special use permit application. Okay, moving to a vote, all in favor? Thank you very much, you're awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, next agenda item, PLPC twenty twenty three zero zero four two. Uh, it's one thirty three through one thirty seven, fourth street. This is for the commission, another special use permit, was this one online? Okay, um, any updates, anything the news since last month's presentation?
All the same.
Was there a discussion left they had amongst the commissioners, anything operational concerns? Layout, parking, anything you guys got into or still any question?
One of the biggest things, we're just waiting to see if there's open comment to the use. Uh, as these roll into our review, but the use might.
And I think, I think the only other thing that we were talking about was the materials, maybe simplifying some of the language in the present, there was this. A lot of the cannabis use restrictions are very, uh, lingo intensive, so making that sort of. Accessible for late folks with a big recommendation, just so that everyone understands exactly what's happening.
Okay, um, so I'll open the floor then for public comment. Anyone come to speak for this project? Anybody in person? Seeing none, anybody on Zoom? Again, use the raise your hand picture. Um, so if you just joined us on Zoom, we are reviewing PLPC twenty twenty three zero zero four two. For one thirty three through one thirty seven, fourth street, um. For the special use permit related to the cannabis grower showcase. If you're in, uh, the Zoom meeting to be able to offer public comment, please use the raise your hand feature. Um, and Eric can let me know. If not, just keep yourself on mute. Okay, um. Nobody, all right. So then we, given that it's a type one, we do need to make a secret determination. Do the commissioners feel prepared to make a decision, right? I'm sorry, somebody in the Zoom chat just said I wanna raise my hand. Okay, hi, Jenny, um, seeing as you're the only person ever replied in chat, you go ahead and unmute yourself. Um, and if you wouldn't mind, start with your name and address for the record and please try to keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Sure, uh, my name's Jenny Scarpula. My address is two two zero one seven State Route twenty two in Housit Falls, New York.
Jenny S, I think it was.
Jenny.
Yeah, it says talking, but we can't hear. Maybe, maybe you wanna put your comments in the chat.
Cannot, we cannot hear you.
We cannot hear you. I don't know, they can hear you.
Yes, you can go ahead and put your comment in the chat. We can read it into the record.
Uh, while they're doing that, I think I asked this last month, but remind me, this is only in the parking area, right?
Come on up, we do have somebody here for public comment. Jenny, if you wanna get your comment into the chat after the person here in person speaks, I will come back to your chat comment.
I, I'm Max Reed, I live at two five six Broadway here in Troy. Um, I just wanted to be briefly in support of the project. Troy so far has been spared, uh, was becoming an epidemic in other areas of the state with this entry, so-called gray market. In fact, it's just people cruising, lack of enforcement on what is still not permitted under statute. So, um, in my view, any legitimate. Implementation of retail, we can actually get started on here in Troy, uh, would be a step in the right direction. Uh, and I've heard, uh, that at the same site in the future, there's another project. For you to establish permanent retail here, um, you know, which I think is a, a good way to make things happen, actually implement legalization. All this other, other jurisdictions that have, uh, retail shops that basically, uh, there's no control over, I don't think, like for tax revenue flowing. That's all.
Thank you. Anything back in the chat or if you know, okay.
Yeah, because I wasn't here last month. I'm not sure I understand the scope of this proposed project. Is there any structure that's proposed?
Uh, like, like, some of it, freestanding structure or?
Yes, a vendor space.
Just like pop-up kinds of. So nothing.
Okay, great.
As I understand it, it's also limited in its duration.
Yeah, I think, correct, it'd be Saturdays only, months of the year.
Okay.
Uh, the, the commenter provided a couple of comments. Do you want, I agree though?
Sure, please.
Uh, Jenny Scarpula says, I am in favor of the cannabis grower showcase. I own a small family on cannabis farm. These farmers are struggling. We have very few avenues to sell our product and these cannabis growers showcases are very helpful. They are very well controlled and we have several here whose pause and positive feedback from the community, the mayor and the police force. These showcases are a great way to deliver quality legal cannabis to the community. Uh, she then states, uh, where they are, Housit Falls. Uh, cannabis growers showcases are highly regulated by the state and we must abide by all regulations and comment.
Thank you for your input. Okay, with that, I'll close public comments. Um, any other commissioner comments? Not then, um.
I, I would actually just, uh, like to put in that we recently received a, a staff note that just asked the applicant if they wouldn't mind. Detailing slightly on the security that would be there at the, at the site.
Yep, so the way these cannabis growers are made staff to work in products. So the way these cannabis growers are made staff to work in products not differs from a farmer's market in that the product's not just laid out on the table.
You make sure you speak it right into the mind and consider.
Sure, so it differs from a farmer's market in that the product, all product is not just laid out on the table, you don't go like pick it up, we have to have a. A secure location where all of this sort of stock is stored, um and then. Uh growers or participants of this have to prove that they're of age twenty one, which where else security will come into play. Will have um some private security, I'm also currently in this police academy, enrolled in that organization, hoping to. Get some more police officers on board as well to help out kind of as needed, um the same time too, we don't, you know, we don't want to be. Anything thing with security and everything there, so kind of keep it open, but same kind of maintain professional appearance and boundaries. But yeah, I think not having all the products displayed on the table will avoid a lot of complications and in the right security in the right areas. So help mitigate that as well.
Um just a follow up, the the follow up question to that was, are are these sales uh able to be conducted um electronically or are they all cash?
Texture, um there will be. Cannabis payments are currently regulated, but really illegal, our names are a bit hard, um but there are some card vendors. We don't want to have a large surplus of cash, and in the event that that does happen, we do have a plan in place to have a group of volumes that we're not. Sitting on what may or may not be a large volume of that. The easy side.
Yeah, the same question seems to have just come through in the chat of what are the security measures? Anything else then? Going once, going twice. Alright, so then, um at this point, we need a determination for a seeker, give them a type one action. So we need either a positive or negative declaration.
Uh I need a motion that we issue a negative declaration.
Okay, moving to a vote, all in favor. Uh motion carries and then uh passed that would be approval of the special use permit. So we need a motion there as well.
I make a motion that we uh support and approve the special use permit.
A second. Okay, Steven, that's the second, what do we do, a vote, all in favor? Okay, um back to agenda. PLPC twenty twenty three zero zero four zero, uh that is two sixty nine through two seventy five of Fifth Avenue. Hello again.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Wanted to see where you guys wanted to start, did you guys want to start talking off um? With the public review?
Um I I'd like to know any changes you want to highlight for the commission on the plans, whether it's layout or um. Appearance of things, function, anything you want to add or involve our attention.
So anything aesthetic today, um I just want to talk about layout. Okay, so nothing. Full of the.
If you want, I can share my screen before.
Yeah, so basically my main focus on this meeting is just going to be talking about this layout specifically.
Just so you know, your screen doesn't share it yet.
Alright, so I took into account a lot of you guys' um messages, um so we moved the laundromat over to the left. And then we brought the three retail units in the beginning uh to the front of Fifth Ave. I did not like the idea of the alleyway being the entrance for the plaza, so I ended up building on uh one oh six and I do understand that this is required. The variance because this doesn't meet the seventy percent front to the hundred and sixth. Um, I mean, I implemented a concrete walkway between the laundromat and the three retail units. So you don't have to go all the way around, so I think that was one of our. That we talked about meeting two months ago. I limited um amount of parking spots since they were needed, um I implemented more, you know, traffic bands outside. I implemented dumpster being on right side of um the grass area is. Wanted to get you guys' feedback on this.
Thank you, yeah, I recall the previous orientation of the buildings kind of being rotated uh in degrees. Yes, yeah, um so turn it over to the commissioners. I need feedback to offer for them.
They have a question, sure, well, well, your pretty small straps have opening doors coming onto the street.
Yes, so, yeah, so they're gonna have two entrances technically, so it'll be one on Fifth Ave side and then one in the parking lot.
Please, I I just was gonna say, I think this is um definitely a a big step in the right direction, so I want to thank you for. Putting it all over to to bring it this far, um and I'm I'm definitely looking forward to hearing some of the comments. Steven, you're ready to go, um I just wanted to ask that the concrete walkway. That goes all the way out, um expanded wider than five feet, I think, I think you could do something more like ten. And I understand that that might seem like it um encourages into the square footage of the buildings, but I think we could see the buildings essentially. Become longer, um so that they can stay uh similar size, um just to to not make that uh. That walkway feel really cramped and to avoid uh any sort of. I don't know, avoid attracting crime or or making it, making it a a dark uh narrow area that's uh.
That's definitely something that we could um. Implement.
Yeah, I I think you, my, my questions were were basically just, yeah, that the. Is it is the intention that the the orientation of the buildings are now sort of the front entrance, if you will, sort of the main presented. Entrance is on. On Good Avenue?
Yes, because um the only reason why I'd like to do that is because a lot of the neighbors. Um many of them don't have vehicles and a lot of them would meet in checkered board laundromat, a lot of people would walk. Um there are a few cars, so we think, you know, having the entrance on Fifth Ave is the best thing. And then having a secondary uh entrance on parking lot side would would also be good. If not, I mean, again, later on, those make that a secondary exit, but so far we're sticking with the two entrances.
Excellent, yes, thank you, uh I I'll echo uh James's point about the the widths, um maybe a little bit difficult. Um but yeah, I think, I think we're we're. You know, much improvement in.
Taking the width for the concrete walkway?
Yeah, just like, um you know, five, five feet may sound adequate, but like the the lived experience of five feet is, it's, it feels pretty cramped. You know, but um I I think that's, this is a dramatic improvement from um what you presented before, so. Um I'll commend you on that and then um in my understanding, sort of the section that is abutting. The uh alleyway, that is also, uh you were saying a grassy area?
Yes, so where the dumpster is and to the right of the dumpster, so. So all of this will just be impervious area, so it's just all, you know, grass, you can plant trees there, we could. You know, we'll do that in the landscaping, part of the site print once we get to it, but in my main focus was just like the layout.
Yeah, no, that sounds like, sounds great, and I'll look forward to that, that landscaping, man, I think this is, that's a really excellent, that's a lot of. Areas to really bring and bring a lot of uh interesting visually and and provide some, you know, a nice uh rest of it back there, so thank you.
I have a question because I wasn't here last month. Are you demolishing buildings that are already on the site or have they already come down?
So I'll show you a picture of what I have here, so this is what I used. Okay, and then there was a fire, so it was all demolished, so right now it's leaking the model.
Thank you, yeah, that orange fence shouldn't have given it away.
There was a previous submission where the buildings were not front to be on um. And so what they've done is address our request because they would have had to get a variance then, they still will, but this is more. In line with what's on the apartment. And also what's on this, I think I might uh widen the entrance to the. To the driveway a little bit like parking lot instead of twenty four, I meant thirty. That a little bit more room, but again, we'll work with that once we, you know, increase the width of the concrete walkway and extend the buildings out to see. What can go where.
And only, I'm sorry, only six parking spots are required here?
Well, actually, there's no parking spots required in this. District, but um I did want to implement some of that, because we used to have nine, but I did bring it down a little bit just because. I had to make some room for, you know, the concrete walkway and dumpster and I I wanted, I still wanted grass areas, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
So you're specifically just looking for feedback right now on your layout?
Yeah, pretty much, and then the next meeting is when we'll get the outside plan what I had two months ago and then. Should, everything should be more in detail and I have a few ideas of where the fence and everything are going to go to.
Yeah, please plan for that next step to bring some um elevations as well, so not just the site plan, but uh. Uh you have elevation to there, there's.
Very, very, very adventurous line work, and there's the old uh elevations anyway, so when we get new ones, it'll be nice.
Um and if you could have those, you know, with with material colors and choices, so or offer comment on that as well. Okay, great.
Do you have any idea who your tenant would be, your retail tenant?
So for one of the retails, um so we will be running laundromat and we plan on running one of the retail units as well, it's gonna be like a. Bro area, so we have, you know, Albany, so it'll be like street food, but they'll strictly be law food. Um and then the other two units, they're only gonna be retail, so it'd be like clothing, it'd be like, you know, a bike shop or anything of that sort. No convenience stores, no liquor, no, no tobacco, no base, not. We've had that again in Middleburg, but I can't go back on the now, this we've already signed the lease and everything, but. This uh for this plaza, none.
Any other comments about layout?
Uh just so I'm clear, that the the entrance for the laundromat, that is from the parking lot, is that correct?
So the entrance for the laundromat will most likely will have three entrances, so we'll have two from the parking lot, so one around where my mouse is right now. Another one maybe right here, then one in the front.
Okay.
But again, that will probably change when we, you know, do some stuff here and there, but definitely want to have minimum two entrances. And then we'll have one escape back uh towards the alley, but yeah, definitely two entrances. Maybe three, but minimum of two.
I I definitely would look, you know, definitely want to make sure that you get one on on Fifth Avenue.
What one suggestion I have for you, are you planning along the alley side, oh yeah, I do see there's a fence call up, but I think it ends. At the edge of the laundromat, so along the grass space so close to the dumpster running along the alley.
Yeah.
Um how do you intend to delineate between that grass space, what what's gonna be the border, the boundary between the alley and that?
Most likely we'll put a six inch curb there, uh just so the grass area will be a little bit raised up. And then we'll cut around the dumpster area and the dumpster will be fenced in.
In my mind, and I'm curious to hear what the other commissioners think, that maybe a knee wall might be nice there, that's feasible. It allows you to do some different things with plantar planters and. I just thought I could close off that space without walling and. Okay, um so if that's all, uh we already declared application materials complete, is that correct?
Yeah.
Oh, right.
Um you've given us a direction to return with with more extensive of the limit. But I think you do also have the ability to say that it. What's presented needs the bare minimum to be determined complete, and if you do make that determination, you can schedule the public hearing. And direct them to bring back the new materials next month, rather than looking at the new materials next month, then saying it's complete and scheduling the public hearing for the following.
I personally would like to see those elevations detailed out a bit more, um and a little bit more of what we're asking for in favor.
That's fine, I mean, I just also wanted to say, I know we're not required to have public comment, but it does seem like there are some committee members. Potentially here or or people commenting in chat, so do we want to take some public comments now or?
I'm okay with it.
People sat through channel. Oh, yeah, see if anybody's here, um on a previous question, just the way that a partner wrote them, I would be in favor of. It's not making an application of merit, it's just moving the process.
I get that, but I also think that you should get habit of setting a better precedent for ourselves. Because we're in, I've seen a lot of the projects that probably should not have been. Been very uh. With our completeness uh definition, so I think it's a good, good opportunity to present. Or to be complete, we need to have certain things, and maybe that at at some point we do have to bring this down, it doesn't sound like it'll hold them up.
Well, if we prepare for the next meeting, then we can schedule a public hearing for the following, so.
Fair enough.
That really is a shop return to the actual meeting to make sure it gets to where it is of course.
It's all processed.
I mean, make a motion if you'd like to. Absolutely, and I'll decline. Okay, um so hearing no motions, then um I will make a motion to the table. Do we need to table it since it's just a sketch review?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'll make the motion that we table it, or would you like to come back for the November meetings?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we table it until the November fifteen planning commission.
And we want to hear people, at least who are in, who are in person. Is there any, yeah.
Is there anyone here in person?
Yeah.
Okay, come on up. Just so you know, uh this isn't the actual formal public hearing, so if you want your comments to be included as part of the formal record on the project. You would have to come back and restate what you said uh to have it included and not, this is just as the courtesy and out of our interest to. To know what the sentiment is around the project.
You can also submit them in writing.
Also that, thank you.
I need to Jackson, I used to live by the Middleburg um plaza, that was built by the same developers. I grew in Middleburg, calling the system a violent design. Um in my case, I have two young boys that I am raising on my own and I need safe, sustainable housing. And I think uh safe communities that is vital where they're up. Unfortunately, my children and I have to move out of the Middleburg area, but now we not live in it. I was alarmed when I found out the same developers are trying to build another plaza near my house, this is um this asset would be. But poses a great threat to our neighborhood and the kids in the. Along with myself, there are many parents in in this area that don't want to worry about more shootings, more break-ins, more murders, or overdoses. And people in crisis, um trash, piles, needles, broken glass, voidery, and the list goes on. Uh Middleburg is a prime example of why the developers should not be granted the access to move into our community. Safe to family housing is already been some. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. And the fact that it's best to use law areas. I don't need or want to see you worry if me or my kids can go out to the car at night or walk to the quarter store. Um, we need to get rid of these threats and not allow them to grow in our community. So, I do feel like this will pose a great threat in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
How's it going? Ryan, round two twenty-five six. A lot away from here. I have a letter, a signature on it. Uh, dear city of Troy, we trust you are in good, all in good health. We are writing as concerned members of our neighborhood to express our bloods of apprehensions about the proposed two sixty-nine through two seventy-five second view for a planning for the proposed plan includes a laundromat and three retail spaces and we report these uh any retail spaces of course safety, trash, and traffic issues. The city of Troy already faces. We are deeply concerned that this plaza will negatively impact our neighborhood environment. That's what this is the case developer project in Middleburg. Uh, our community faces ongoing challenges, notably concerning number of shootings. We believe that introducing certain retail businesses, such as convenience stores or smoke shops, potentially worsens those challenges jeopardizing your funds. Overall, well-being better third. While we acknowledge the acknowledge that such establishments offer convenience to be firmly emphasized, that safety of our residents is above most. The extended operating hours and increased foot traffic associated with retail plaza attract unwanted attention. Tribute to intended violence are we use plaza open same developer uh nowhere is the example where four people were shot in the plaza within the last fifty days. Research has shown that the retail business, due to their hours of operations handling, can sometimes become hard to cover like this. This raises the unsettling possibility of more frequent shootings related as instilling distress fear. Furthermore, the prospect of fighting noise and traffic congestion resulting from such a plaza uh raises concern about creating an environmental environment conducive conducive, sorry, conducive to criminal activities. The well-being of our families and the test rates is bound to improve. And we believe any potential risk to some products must be carefully examined and addressed. In light of these shared concerns, we respectfully request the parking lot to be in the back of the building. All this. Uh, the number of retail space incorporating and uh prevents any of the three retail space being leased as a convenience store or made bodega or a smoke shop. The contingency plan should be enforced by the new zoning planning two eight five fifty, two eighty-five fifty-two, which they're not technically within five hundred feet, but they're eight bodegas within half mile. I don't think we need a mine. Uh, which does not allow a store or smoke shop to open within five hundred feet of a similar business. We urge a comprehensive evaluation before reaching any decisions. Our future is at stake. And we really appreciate your consideration. For matters, thank you for your time and attention. We look forward to collaborative effort to identify alternative alternative solutions that prioritize our community's safety and long term by town respectfully to the tax mayors of Troy. And uh yeah, uh, the fifth ad entrance is one of those things that I usually get concerned about. It's been that super busy. We have two different traffic lights. They're still out. We have the temporary light that's costing the city a bunch of money, but this is right next to the one that's still out. There's a bunch of cars that are crashing there almost daily now. I don't think that that enters can be super ideal. Maybe ask for space bring it off inside. Um. And moving forward without having a detailed plan for what's going into the other two retail spaces is just opening ourselves up for two more vacant spaces in the city of Troy. We see it happen often. And it's just a bummer. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Just a reminder though, if if you do want those comments included for record, you'll have to come back. Or submit them. Oh, you can compare to people like I I have. Um, again, you don't need to respond any of it. It's not public. Oh, and one zoom. Um, if you're on Zoom.
Yes.
Unmute yourself and say your name and address.
Uh, can I speak? Can you hear me? Okay, yes, my name is Yusuf Erkat. I uh own a company of real estate.
You're Yusuf.
Yes. Uh, me and my partner, we own a couple of buildings on Fourth Avenue. I'm a graduate of master's degree of urban and regional planning. And uh, I'm looking at the plan of uh the developer which have three retails.
Um, you can enter your comment in the chat if you'd like to. Uh, but again, this is not the formal public hearing, so we we will have another opportunity to try to. Okay, um, is there something else you wanted to address?
Sure. Um, my name is Dr. Mohamed. I own the.
I'm sorry, can you just get a little closer?
Okay, my name is. I don't run the deli. I run the. And I say right now in the meeting, we would not rent into the bigger store. We not got rented with the communes. Um, I can't control the times. It's not my job. So, please. On both time in the food and the new time in the land agreement. And and this is two vacancy. Somebody come, they're gonna come to the planning zoning, it can be directly.
May I talk now?
Chat coming to. There was a comment in the chat that the person trying to speak was talking, but we could not hear.
Hello?
Okay, um, where to vote on? We were about to. Then some. So, we'll back in the motion. Uh, moving to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. You're all set. We'll see you in November. Sorry, you just moved on.
There will be an opportunity to comment, but uh, it's a public hearing, which if you want to comment on this application.
You will have the opportunity. Okay, the next agenda item is under new business PLPC twenty twenty-three zero zero four three. The applicants is RPI. Thank you for your patience and thank you.
Hopefully, we won't go for a lot. Thank you for allowing us to present this uh new project. My name is Michael Ginsburg, I'm attorney with Patterson Ginsburg Griffin. And I'm here tonight on behalf of RPI um to propose the sports courts that billions projects I had identified on mission. Uh, in a moment, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Pollard. Cut Harvard for to describe the project. Uh, we do believe that physicality and functionality of what's being proposed fit in perfectly with what's already there. Uh, the pavilions, picnic tables are not a departure already exist on campus. They would enhance the ability of the uh RPI community to use the facilities uh without interfering with uh anything outside of uh the RPI campus. And the sports courts are proposed to be reped right next to a sports facility that already exists. Uh, with that, I would like to move it over to Jason Pollard uh from. Thank you, everybody.
Good evening. I'm Jason Pollard, DJ, I'm a project engineer and uh project manager um for this for this project. And I'm here on behalf of RPI, gonna try to share my screen here enough. Okay, so um this project on campus is really two different sites. I'm gonna I'm gonna go through the the first site. Uh, first, this is what we're upon the freshman hill site. Uh, this is the the south end of campus. Uh, east of the existing softball field and west of the existing tennis courts, and then also west of uh freshman hill for the number of freshman dorms. Um, on this site, there are actually two projects uh proposed, uh two, two facilities rather. Uh, one at the south end of the alumni sports recreation parking lot where my cursor is now. That's a a pavilion site. And then just up the hill uh to the west of freshman hill is the sport court site. Uh, so just kind of wanted to familiarize um planning commission with the location. And I'll bring up the landscape plan here in a minute. Not familiar with this P G F program, so I'm gonna try to.
Close some of those ribbons on the sideline, the bookmarked tab.
Okay. Yeah, closer.
Just here.
Yeah, there you go. Get there eventually. So, I'm gonna start with the sport courts here. I'm very good quality on this right now. Um. My screen looks much better. Um, so, uh, with that said, uh, the sport court site is again, uh, just west of uh freshman hill. Um, this includes a a large uh concrete pad with a sport court uh floating tile um kind of on top of the concrete court and that would house a basketball court and then also a volleyball court and pickleball court. Um, one thing to note is that on on campus, there is currently no location for basketball and volleyball. So, this kind of creates a new space for a program, a programmatic space that the college doesn't currently have. There are uh three low mass LED light bulbs proposed to to light this facility, which would replace um the number of existing outdated light bulbs in that parking lot that we are kind of repurposing. Uh, so it's an existing parking lot that's kind of underutilized at this point. And so we will be reutilizing um that space for the new uh recreation space for for student life on campus. Um, there's also four basketball hoops, kind of two in the long direction and two uh short for the for uh basketball hoops. Um, some multi-sport netting for the volleyball and pickleball courts. And then perimeter uh netting around the tires for for so that the temp high uh netted system. Uh, as well as eighty-eight parking spaces, which are on the south end of this a portion of the existing parking lot that we will repurpose um and designate to eighty-eight spaces to be accessible uh concrete walks to the support for itself. And also connect to uh visiting A walkways uh on the north side of the school. Uh, so that's the first um project or facility on this site. And I'm gonna try to move over as best I can here to the pavilion site.
Excuse me, is there a sheet that we could look at that would be a little more clear? Because we all have the packet.
Yep.
What sheet number is that?
Uh, so this would be, this is the the landscape plan. Um, and so on the sheet that you guys have, the the sport courts are shown on T one hundred. And then the pavilion uh site is shown C one O two and C one O one. That's the black and white. I do also have a rendering that I'll show here in a minute. Uh, and and that'll actually be a little bit better to talk to. Uh, but the the pavilion site, it's it's not in order. It's just way.
Okay, okay.
Uh, so in regards to the pavilion site, this is what we're proposing here at the south end of the that alumni sports recreation park. Uh, is a forty by sixty rectangular shaped open air pavilion um with a powder coated steel frame and structure um as well as a a standing Z metal roof and then exposed uh wood decking for the for the roof structure. Um, underneath that open air pavilion um we're proposing a multi-purpose building structure. Um. It's kind of a support building structure, which would be constructed of a eight H CMU structure with a four inch stone veneer kind of, you know, add on to the the general campus architecture. Um, as well as a flat E B D M membrane. Um, in terms of programmatic space within the building footprint, uh, we're proposing two unisex restrooms, uh, one audio visual utility room. Um, and really, the the main idea of this pavilion is to uh improve student life on campus. And so they would utilize this building for an outdoor uh educational, outdoor classroom kind of uh event space. Um, you know, the there's a, there's a lot of things that you can do with it, but it's kind of a flex space uh for holding different events on campus and in improving student student life. Um, as well as a storage room, uh that would be full of storage, unheated, unconditional space. Um, as well as some uh lighting and security systems. Um, and underneath the pavilion would be a concrete pad. We're also proposing some concrete sidewalks, eighty-eight accessible sidewalks, something for the parking lot. As if you to do eighty-eight parking stalls, as you can see. Um, we are reducing some parking out there, um, but we are, you know, keeping a good portion of the existing park. Um, we're also creating some landscape space. Um, you can see at the south end of the parking lot to kind of break up. Um, as you enter that parking lot, kind of creating a a landscape space between the parking lot and the actual pavilion. They created a nicer feel um for the for student life. Um, within this little plaza area, this would be kind of a campus standard stone paper plaza uh with some tree grades. So, no. Landscape species approve of campus.
Could I pause you?
Sure.
Uh, would you mind switching back to the, or do you have the Google Maps helping? Should I stay on your?
Got it.
I'll make sure I understand where each thing is going.
I have no idea where.
I'll tell you, this is the lot that the sport courts are going.
Yeah.
And then down here at the end of this lot is where I think the pavilion is selling.
Can you just reiterate?
Yeah, so I.
Yes, you can see the area on my screen right now. The sport court that I described is actually taking the place of this parking lot. Uh, where my cursor is. And then the pavilion would be at the south end of this park. An another uh reason for the location of the pavilion, my cursor is, is to kind of tag team um a dual dual use for the sport court that we're building as well as the softball facility, which is currently under renovation right now. So, kind of create a central space for those two societies. Bounce back to this real. So, on the east side of the pavilion, we are proposing some landscape uh areas that kind of work well with the the topography of the site because flow up to the sport court area up to the east. And so we're proposing some informal tier seating, uh modular block retaining wall, kind of knee knee wall type stuff for um per viewing of some sort of event that may go on, an open air space of the pavilion as well as along the south side um to all look after. Kind of work with the topography.
What sheet is this on?
Uh, this is a new sheet that was submitted um as an addendum to the original plan, and I I believe there. This is a new sheet that was submitted as an addendum to the original plan, and I believe there. But I'm also attempting to redo the rendering.
Can't orient myself on like, that's.
Okay. So this, well, hopefully this is a view coming from the softball field looking towards the front face of the pavilion. And so this is the, the south end of that parking lot that we were in. And so this is kind of the landscape area in front of the pavilion. And then the tiered seating would be along this hillside leading up to the sport courts are off the page to the left and then the existing tennis courts are in the background. So this is the open air pavilion, of course, of the bathroom, A V and storage building underneath with some open plaza area for setting up tables. You know, outdoor platform kind of events. And then again, softball is behind me in that foreground. So that is the freshman hill site. Any questions before I move on to the sunset terrace? I hope I, next time you guys share it pretty much easier now. We'll breeze through.
What are these? Oh, you just have this up.
Yeah.
Are the umbrellas?
Are these? Yeah. Great question. These are trees. These are pine trees that were suggested from R P I's standpoint for, for trees at the top of the hill, kind of break up. Create a little bit of a backdrop for the pavilion site.
I, I was, my computer's trying to look at my phone and it's crashing.
Sure.
But on our, on the versions that we have, there's more, there's like not voting on the over. Let's make sure.
Okay. Yes. Yeah. This is a landscape plan that we just as done as an addendum and early last week. So this is not in the original set.
I'm gonna ask one question before we go up to the wicks.
Sure.
There are mature trees on the south edge.
Yep.
Yeah. Aren't they staying in place?
Those, those trees are planned to stay in place. Yes.
Okay.
On a similar note, you know, you have this long key intersection here where I think it's fountain. Are there any, have you guys considered any improvements to that intersection or providing some crossing for students or anybody?
That was not part of this project. I, I will say what we are doing is as we enter offbound into this kind of nondescript street leading to the parking lot, we are removing this little wing to the, where the sport courts will be. So this will be all landscaped lawn areas. So this would be the only remaining parking lot up south of freshman hill.
And that's the only entrance into that parking lot or mountain?
That is.
Yeah, yeah. That's right.
Yeah, I just would encourage you to, I don't know, give a little more thoughts in how students will get there on foot or yeah, besides driving, because it seems like most students are probably gonna be, I would assume, possibly walking there.
Yeah, yeah, most students would be walking or biking. You know, this is, this is all freshman health here, so.
And yeah, I haven't spent a ton of time on the R P I campus, but it isn't like these are often a little awkward for people to figure out how to walk when you have a intersection like that, you know, it lends itself to a student in a rush. It's a little too fast.
Yeah, I mean, the majority of students will come freshman, from freshman hill, kind of along this path. And then if we, if you remember from the site plan, there's a, there's a sidewalk that connects to this existing sidewalk along the east side of the sport courts. And then to the parking lot, kind of created access for both parking lot and.
And to James's point, I think maybe just a little bit of thought even between moving between these facilities from the pedestrian standpoint, especially from going from the tennis courts to the others. You know, once you're on the other side, like, you know, maybe we don't necessarily need to dictate every like step, but is navigating that, that driveway and parking lot might need some kind of attention there?
Sure, yeah, we, we could look at that. I will say that there is a walkway from the sport courts down the hill. There's a stairs that, that leads down to this parking lot and then would connect. So maybe what we could do is provide some sort of sidewalk along the east face of this parking lot to kind of bridge the gap between those. So it's absolutely a good point.
Yeah, I think that would be great. And just recognizing that, especially college students who are going to class to dorms and other places, you know, not necessarily following one pattern all day, just like how they would get there from, say, the southwest edge of the screen. Do you know what I mean? So yeah, they already have the contest with the mask or kind of fire station. So they're coming from, you know, the reverse side of this one.
James, I really appreciate that comment. So I'm gonna let this sub R P I after the record, I'll just close that. I do not think it biases me either pro or against this project. But that specific walk that you just mentioned, going from freshman hill through basically the softball fields. You really shouldn't be walking across the softball field. And it was always kind of unclear what the intended path was to get out towards, say, the, uh, the Aden building or out to Big Apple, we got pizza at three a.m. So maybe just some, some sort of pathway or lighting in that area might be helpful. I do recognize that there's residents right across the street there. The other thing that jumps to mind in this area is how in demand parking is. You can see it right in the photo that cars start to queue right up into that entrance drive. Really outside of this project, but anything you could do to make that parking available all the way right to the entrance of the lot there, I'd be happy to see. And then a question for you, do you know, does ground zero still exist and does it still operate out of Nugent basement? Okay, I'm showing my age. Okay, so that was gonna be a comment about access for them to that space, but if they're not there anymore, then no worries.
So that, you're kind of the parking upset edge does sort of contradict with my, my thinking.
Well, next to the park.
Well, yeah, and then there just needs to be some, some area where there is not parking, so you could kind of better line of sight for pedestrians crossing. And that's missing here for me. You know, because there's only the sidewalk on the south side, correct? About. Yes. So yeah, if there was a walkway on the north side, or if they're gonna be, you're gonna maintain that as the pedestrian line of travel, then having, you know, maybe a mid walk crossing or something there for students to crawl safely. I know bound is a super high volume road, but it is rather wise, you're gonna have to higher speeds. It's in a rush, like somebody. Yeah.
Well, it's, it's somewhat lower, lower volume roads that sometimes are dangerous because of that exact thing. And in space, especially thinking through where people will cross, rather than forcing them into what, you know, might be like mean untidy, but like really following that desire line, because that's really gonna be the thing that actually produces safety. So just, and again, I'm, it's hard to understand, like, is this related to this project? I mean, it clearly is related, but I don't know if it's totally out of the scope. But these are the things that we're kind of concerned about. How students will be, you know, interacting with this space.
Yeah, yeah, we could, we can certainly take all those thoughts to heart and, and look at it and whether we create an exact path from our facility all the way to where they end up. Maybe not, but, but maybe we can alleviate them getting to a safer way to get to the space. So yeah, we'll, we'll certainly. Put that on the agenda.
Excellent.
From. All right, so freshman hill site. Moving on to sunset terrace site. All right, so this is in the kind of, it's northeast corner of campus. This is sunset terrace. And this is Beaman Drive. And so on, on this particular site, only a pavilion is built. And the pavilion would be where my cursor is now, at the intersection of Sunset Terrace and Beaman Lane. And the idea is for that pavilion to be centered on the longitudinal axis of Beaman with, with views and proximity to the views looking down into the valley and down below. This is basically the highest point on campus. So this area does have potential for views down into the, the west facing, you know, sunset, also down into the valley. In terms of the pavilion, it's really the same exact footprint of the pavilion forty by sixty, same, you know, structural components. The building itself is, the building underneath the pavilion is oriented slightly differently. And I'll bring that up here in a second.
At this location, what's the conceptualized use for it? Whereas at the other one, there's potential live show there, there's a connection to the sports courts right next to it. I know we can count it as right there. But is this meant to be just like a gathering space, a spot where maybe people queue before going to the game? What, what is the thought there?
Yeah, I, I think all of the above is, you know, again, flexible space, multi-use space. I will say that this is the perspective view. This is the perspective view of the sunset terrace pavilion. So you can see that the building underneath is oriented in the longitudinal direction as opposed to the, the short direction, the short direction. In the background, where a bunch of mature trees are, that will be a rope court that the R P I, that R P I is actively pursuing now. Actually, I believe they have a contract to get that built. It's coming here. Okay. Yes, so separate project, but will be used and worked in conjunction with this particular site. So similar uses, you know, outdoor classroom, hangout spot, gathering space. Also used again in conjunction with the ropes course in the background. So that'll be kind of built into the woods on the east side of this. And then, so we left, we left the, the front of this space open for for the people gathering there. We'll have those views off the west side of the valley. In addition to the program, again, we are showing crosswalks across Sunset Terrace with ADA accessible walkways. Not shown on this figure, but in your layout plan, on the south side, some that there is kind of goes down the hill, we are showing ADA designated spaces with sidewalks leading up to the pavilion as well. Some mire landscaping. Yeah, really, really no major differences. Program from the freshman hill. Anything I missed early, Brad? Any questions?
Open to you.
Can you just go to the, the plan view for this one?
Yeah. So this is rotated ninety degrees, but south is left on the page, north is right on the page. Rope's course is back here.
Crosswalks are live and patches?
Yes. Yeah, these are crosswalks. And there are already rubble strips on the other side and the ADA curb ramps on the other side of the street. So we would just ride crosswalks to get across to those ADA sidewalks.
The crosswalks are where your cursor is, or is crossing the roadway below that?
These are the, these are the crosswalks.
So what is the perpendicular line there, that gray line?
Yeah, this line here is concrete sidewalks. So those would be sidewalks leading from the ADA parking spaces down Sunset Terrace Street and then up to the, the, thanks.
And the darker gray is, is that, is that meant to be a pavement treatment? Is that what I'm understanding?
This one here?
Yes.
Yeah, that is basically because we're building new concrete sidewalks, there will be some, you know, renovations to the existing street that will have to take care of. So that's just askable.
Yeah.
Yeah, the quality of this P D F is really poor. It looked really good on my screen, I swear.
What's the, and you said that's new sidewalk there?
Yeah.
Is that five foot?
Yeah, that's a, that's a new five foot concrete sidewalk.
Yeah, I, if there, I think there's a road, a lot of roadway with there. Could you say so?
Okay.
Yeah, I think enough that.
You already talked about amenities?
I am. I mean, definitely at the, the other sites, it's like a obvious one.
Well, these will be plumb then, some great, there's bathrooms and then good. Is, there is water, right?
Yeah, a lot of water and, and stuff like that.
Are you planning to include like just drinking fountains on, on the exterior of any of these?
Yes, so we do have plans on the plumbing plan for a drinking fountain and a hose button outside of the building. And, you know, we, we did go back and forth on whether these buildings would be heated, unheated, used all season, only seasonally or winterized. And so I think where we landed is that they will be, you know, utilized most of the year. So we decided to, to heat the bathrooms, of course, and then the A V room for certain reasons.
Okay, I was gonna suggest, I mean, if this building is intended to support any of the mine course, you might need more space. I don't know what kind of setup and take down or is seasonally with that, that's gonna be the space, you know, that might naturally want to go into one of these. They don't have a lot to offer on this, this location. Am I understanding that there's, there's sinks in the bathroom, but there's, there's no like external sinker or other accessible sink?
There are, there are currently just things in the bathroom, yeah, in the two unisex bathrooms on each pavilion.
Okay. I mean, I don't know if like, if, if there is some sort of intention of like, it would, I don't know, gel gate or something like that, there could be utility to that. But I mean, that's maybe taking things a bit far, but just.
Even with high ropes course or any, any outdoor activity. I've, I've been on bike rides where an outdoor sink is a really exciting thing.
We do have the water balance with, you know, bottle pillars for that.
And, and it's always good, right?
And then with the, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Same, similar enough.
Yeah. Yeah, there are things that can be very difficult to paint pants.
Fair enough.
Sam, do you have anything else for this site?
I care about, I love both that. And I, I care far less about the other site. Oh, sure. Okay. But the way that, thank you. The way that the roof shed down towards the front of the pavilion doesn't make any sense at all, because I, I, like, I know that it's just a little bathroom and it's a pavilion, but it seems like it would be really fun to be up on Sunset, see something really cute and special. I mean, I think, you know, spray, everything should be really designed, everything. So particularly here, at the highest, the highest point on the R P I property, I think it would be really fun to just do something. highest, the highest point on the RPI property, I think it would be really fun to just do something a little more celebratory. Right, it's like closing in on itself, but it feels very awkward to me.
What I have resisted mentioning is the copper roof just further south that you eventually reach when you're on, you know, kind of campus. How that would really be. I'm excited about standing, I mean, that's, that's where my bar is, but.
Side product for bringing students.
Uh, I've, I've summoned another person.
Yeah, just make a comment about opera. It's cheap, copper, cheap, right? Copper's a, copper's a non-volant.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't need to be glamorous, just more design. And open up, definitely open up to the West. That's why it's here.
Yeah, I mean, these, these renderings may not do what we have in mind justice. Maybe, um, we'll, we'll certainly take that back to the drawing board and do what we come up with.
And then the only other thing is maybe, I, I would actually imagine that having more more, I'll call it plaza, right, more concrete in front of the building so that the activity can fill out a little more comfortably and be in the fun, because you've got a larger group of people. Right, because there's a lot of grass.
More concrete, that's the first time I've ever heard that. Yeah, no, it's not a bad idea. More, more. Right, I see, if it is successful, then you will have people congregating and, like, inevitably just standing on the sidewalk.
Right, because those little trapezoids will end up being, um, brown.
Right. And possibly, like, with some seating or other, like, elements that could be seating, kind of stones or something.
Right, make it destination, right, not just a convenience, because it looks like a convenience right now, so let's make it a destination.
Looks like the cannabis showcase destination.
Which I think you did a little bit of at the freshman hill, but thinking about how it's been chose, or the fact that you thought about the backdrop to it by adding pine trees, there was a bit more thought, I think, about location. About how you placement.
Are those white line you guys present? Interesting. Um, yeah, somebody, Steven mentioned bike racks at the other location, I don't feel super strongly about that here, because it seems like people who are here, well, if you're doing the ropes course, yeah, for sure, definitely bike racks at all locations, um, one with two points of contact.
I think it's a great place to stop and use the bathroom when you're riding, so, yeah.
If you can make it up the hill, then you deserve.
On the connection to desert port is like the very, very frequently used bike route. Uh, right, like, right at the top of Sunset, to get out to, uh, late. By, by me and many other people, it's, it's very, very popular for people going in and out of town. Yeah.
Is, is the intention in both of these locations for the bathrooms to be spot entry? For students?
We haven't thought through that yet. We've had some discussion about it, but we haven't decided, it'll probably be key and only when it's occupied by certain activities of the annual, but we're not we haven't, want to pull a figure on that, so we're over for a second. Yeah, I mean, we could go wild with the concepts here. I mean, remember what it's worth, I'm, I'm team, you know, having public restrooms open as much as can be possible, of course, so just get what it's worth.
Anything else? Is there any quiet? Okay, um, so for tonight, we need a motion, I, I think there's no here for a motion about the completeness. Okay, I'll make that motion. Okay, moving to all, all in favor? Alright, so this was type two, I believe, um, so at this point, um, our processes, you'd come back next month, uh, the public hearing will be set for it, or review any changes, open the floor for public comment. If there's any feedback we need to give, we'll give it and then move forward.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, so, uh, you're good to come back for the next, uh, for the November, you did, November?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so I will make a motion that we table this to the November fifteenth, the planning commission. Where, uh, there will be a public hearing. Oh, thank you, um, sure, uh, rolling to a vote, all in favor? Alright, thank you very much.
Twenty twenty-three, zero, zero, four, zero. The longer man is retail. Um, there was mention of a existing facility operated, developed by the applicant in Middleburg, is there a way that he can put this additional information about that? Is that appropriate?
Property?
The other property, what? So do we need to determine the relevance of that commentary?
I did ask. I did ask the applicant to, uh, maybe address some of the ownership issues surrounding that other project. If we, if we can, so, uh, I'll make sure that that's a step.
Are you familiar, do they own the other part? It seems like you have some.
And you run away in your. My understanding, and I don't want to speak for the applicant, but my understanding is that, uh, as they stated on the record, that they signed a lease uh, with a, a business entity, um, that I think is a ten-year lease, I'm not sure when that lease was signed, but again, I did ask the applicant to try to clarify some of those things at, at the next meeting. So the applicants, I gotta be supportive of this current project and. The, to my, again, to my understanding for this current project, that it's, uh, within that location, um, that, uh, they are the sole developer, the, um, the owner developer.
Whereas at the other location, it sounds like they may have been a, I think it's a property manager or some, or. Yeah.
The new zoning code that contains specific language that says, um, I'm paraphrasing, that an application can't proceed unless, uh, the applicant is paid up on taxes, because they have an impending violation. Um, I think that's the extent of the investigation that you can conduct into ownership uh, during a cycling process. Because the, the designer of property is not, not the owner that, that you're.
Right, so somebody could be the best, or worst, wondering if we've ever seen on another site, but we have no way of linking that to the project.
So therefore, such commentary from the public, is there relevance?
Basically.
I mean, I, I would, I would argue that it's, it, it, it's not, it's, it's functionally not the point of zoning and planning, it's, this is, this is great, this is permitting perhaps, but like.
Yeah, yeah. Code, crime.
Whatever.
Yeah, I was also gonna bring it up conceptually, some of the commentary was about the idea of a commercial business in and of itself, right, and by those kind, which is not, it's not, yeah.
It's just that they could put it mildly.
The, the experience of another location as testimony is relevant until the applicant states that there's no intention for this to occur here. Uh, it would become relevant as a compatible use in the neighborhood if the applicant says, yeah, we don't care what goes on over there and it's think it's probably gonna happen here, not our problem, it's we problem, then it would become relevant, because you have to determine compatibility of the neighborhood, but in my thirty years, an applicant in that situation will always say, we have no intention of, you know, those problems over there, we address them, and then they're not gonna carry over here. So once they say that, it's really more like.
But do we know exactly, to your point, do we know what types of establishments are being referred to at Middleburg and this?
No. One, the, the, the type of establishment, establishment that they, uh, that are being referred to are a, uh, convenience store and another, uh, lounge. There's also like a lounge there, and there's night club, but night club lounge.
I don't know, kind of this.
But again, the applicant's material and so as part of the record, um, yeah, I, I don't know how, how relevant we can really, uh, bring that situation into this one. Um, you know, again, I don't know the extent of ownership at this alternative, alternative location, and I, I I think that, you know, the commission should keep their, their purview on, onto the fifth app site more than anything else, you know, I, I know there's a lot of noise about the other location. Um, so to, to, you know, as you said, I can ask him to try to clarify some of the ownership, but, um, again, I mean, we're really kind of focused on the app.
Fair enough, thank you.
Although you absolutely have the right to ask about intending to use it, because he's just showing four boxes planned, you have the right to private. Um, he listed some that he is not over. He would, he offered them, so the fact that he offered that means that, while you approve all the stuff, he's already sent it to you, so that becomes part of the election.
Oh, sorry, you're suddenly on the slow.
Just as like, uh, even that sort of was kind of I, I, I mean, it's, it's allowed, but all of those things are allowed uses under zoning, and like, I mean, if he offers it, then okay, but like I, I'm more kind of getting into the, like, how do we relate to the public, and like, I, I, I do want the public to understand, these are uses that are allowed under zoning, that we all like, voted, like, that the city council voted in, so like, I just wanna like, make that clear to be.
Well, I mean, that we have to explain that on any project.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And it's always part of our role, uh, to explain that, that.
And then I, that is the thing that I actually do want to bring up to the, the commission is, is what, like, do sh- should we have some more active role in, especially as we get, like, comments and things from the public, to what extent should we directly respond or not?
I've wondered that myself, you know, to what extent we should be educators about the process of planning and development in a city. You know, when we get comments or direct, you know, we get a, a letter about a project, and they say, please don't put a convenience store here, put residential here, there's a clear disconnect, thinking that the city is the one deciding or coming up with what a private developer wants to do, whereas in reality, it's that person's property, they, they look at what's permitted under zoning, and that's what they can choose from to propose, or get our variance. And then, and that we're bound by, so then I get that email, I'm like, should I be directly responding to this member of the public, explaining that that is not the process of development in the city?
And we have it.
You hope it, I suppose.
You have a time to prep us, oh, like, hearing with kind of an explanation of the scope, what we are actually powered to do, and what you're not empowered to do. Try to at least saw, saw those comments, but, you know, I think it is also with people right now, because saying, right, you know, not this year, but it's allowed by.
Oh, and just, you know, observing from the comments that we, that we have received on this so far, I mean, I, I even sort of sat here while the applicant was, while some of the public is speaking, and, and I'm just sort of like, I, I I, I kind of want to say, like, look, like, you're thinking about this all wrong, you know, but I, I just, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm uncertain as to like, where, where we should
there's nothing prohibiting you from responding to a problem addressed, or replying to somebody directly.
Although, your example, I'm, I'm somewhat nervous about the individualized responses to, to emails, because if it's, even though you're the chairman, even though you may be exactly right, it's still technically just an individual response from you, it's not a response from a condition.
Yeah, it would have, it'd benefit you, or who would you articulate that in your message?
Yeah.
I am replying as one person.
I can only speak for myself.
All right, yeah. Okay.
It's just while we're all here, do we want to try to get, uh, site visited, we, um, four of us at least are available on twenty fifth at five P M, it looks like.
So you did not enjoy it for me, and, um, my next week.
Terrible, yeah, I would say, you say we're gonna not gonna be able to do that. I get Eric's comment about the daylight.
Are you guys just looking to not be trespassing, or you want to do it as a formally coordinated one, physically, or just walking your dog?
All two, uh, representative from the project was gonna walk in with us, be able to answer your question about the site, which I thought would be really helpful, um, you know, in looking at, I'm like, two to the project, but yeah, it's just our division, sometimes, generally, all projects, so with one of the scale, you know, hey, is that tree coming down, or is that building gonna be here, or?
Especially, yeah, so would they?
Yeah, so then would, would, would people be able to go early in the day? Going at six becomes prohibitive, because they're going at uh, eight o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, I, I can do the morning as we beam through.
I'll be gone here. What was that, I think, was it the twenty fifth, that was the entire. Um, anybody have any, I can, I can flex as good as I can.
I mean, I'm, I'm leaving on the twenty-sixth, so twenty-sixth through the twenty-ninth, so, but thirty, thirty-first?
We also do have, like, this a month, so.
That's true.
Yeah, yeah, I go three, three first. And going on, be careful of ghosts.
That, gotta look out for dogs.
Could you do the thirtieth? At eight A M?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Eric, can you reach out to the applicant, see if they can make some friends first on the thirtieth?
I would be happy to, that you guys finally got a good time.
We're all here.
Don't fault you at all.
I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll leave in a second, it's, it's.
Do you want it?
No worries. Um, alright, uh, all in favor?
Aye.